First Plenarum Regent.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be bold, Paul.
Councilmember Groves.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Councilmember, or Mayor DeBoer, excuse me.
Here.
For the consent agenda before we approve it, we can't have Mike here or Jessica here today, so we're gonna postpone 115 Riverside Drive toward Main Street. So we'll remove it completely from old business. Other than that, any other discussion or changes? Motion to approve the consent agenda with that change?
I'll make that motion.
Most support, discussion, sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, public comment, you'll get five minutes. Chief will be keeping track, he'll warn you at four that you got a minute left.
Unless you're speaking for a group, then you get ten minutes, is that correct?
Yep, sure.
Okay, I'm speaking for my tenants at 104 and a half West Main and 102 West Main. I don't think I'm going to need time there. I do have two letters that I'd like to have read into the record, public.
Greg, we know you, can you do name and address for the record?
I don't know, do you want to read those into the record first, or two letters?
No, sorry.
Okay, Greg Cantil, 403 North Washington.
Dear City of Lowell, I am asking that you take, that you please take responsibility for maintaining sewer lines for all the buildings in the downtown area and historic district of Lowell. Lowell has always been a great town and known for driving business into the downtown area and supporting small businesses. Buildings in question have had issues for years and have not been able to keep a business in Lowell for any length of time because of the lines freezing. The last several years have been hard enough for small businesses. Most of the businesses in downtown are owned by people who live in the area and support Lowell in many ways throughout the community. This is a small town and we'd like to support each other as much as possible and the city should do the same. Thank you, Nancy DeBoer, owner of Stations Line. Dear City of Lowell, I am writing this letter to support, in support of the businesses and residents along Main at the addresses of 96 West Main to 106 Main Street and north of the bridge on the stance that the City of Lowell has always maintained and shall continue to maintain the sewer line. The City of Lowell should promptly allow the citizens and businesses to have this item on the agenda at the next council meeting. Denying this discussion and overview of all businesses and residents is negligence on the City of Lowell's behalf. Sincerely, Amy Micah, 20-year resident of Lowell.
All right, some of this you've heard before, but not everybody was here. So on March 15, 7:20 PM, I emailed the city manager and city council asked to be on the agenda for March 21st. That was Tuesday. On Friday, the mayor called me and said it was too late that the PHECET had already gone out. I did a FOIA request to get the timestamp on emails and they went out Friday the 18th, 1:30 PM, about the time the mayor called me, three days after my request. On March 28, Monday, I texted Mike Burns to ask to be put on the agenda and was denied because there was no new information. Mike confirmed that last week and I got screenshots of that text if anybody needs it. Yet Mike called Dave Pasquale to discuss the new information that was turned up by my FOIA request where the city had spent $13,000 to fix a similar problem across the street back in 2003. Dan C. denied responsibility for this line because he could find no records of ever work down the line. We have written a statement that I passed out last meeting from Dan Desjardin, 33-year DPW employee and director, and he stated that the city has always maintained those lines and they've always been a city responsibility. The MDOT print that I passed out at previous meetings does not show any laterals to the existing building on the bridge, 101 and 103 West Main, and that's the dentist office and the Forward Serenity Club currently being remodeled. Doesn't show those laterals because they're a private line. It does show the six-inch public sewer that goes across the street to the south side of the bridge. Now, Mike Burns has stated the city did not accept responsibility for the sewer that was rerouted from 115, 117, and 119 West Main through Spring Grove, which they paid McDonald Plumbing for, which was done without permits, and according to Dan C., did not meet code. He stated we needed an eight-inch sewer line that served multiple buildings and they did it with four-inch. They took a six-inch line away out front, ran it with a four-inch line through Spring Grove. We can either fix this here at the next meeting, if we can get put on the agenda, or we can waste $40,000 in taxpayers' money, because there's a 90% chance you'll be paying your legal fees and all, and this is just ridiculous for this kind of pushback. One council person can make that request and we are on the agenda for the next meeting. Please make that happen.
So Greg, I reached out to you on Friday, May 6, at 3:22 AM, and I asked you, I'm busy, I work, and that's my free time to reach out, to sit down and have a conversation, to come to a, some start of understanding. Your response to me was, it looks like it's in the past. I can, I can't get on the agenda, I can't have a discussion because it's comments only. Doesn't leave me any options other than getting an attorney. The city should have settled this when it was cheap.
Right, you want to meet me in Ada because you don't want to do it here at the table.
No, I didn't want to do it, I wanted to do it in Ada because...
You wanted to meet in Ada, you want me to read the text, didn't it say Vitale's? You were going to meet me in Vitale's?
Yeah.
We don't do this in the backyard, we do it here.
I called you this afternoon so that I could talk to you about, I actually called you after the last council meeting, because I don't know enough about any of this, and I thought between you and Dan, I could learn a lot about it, but you don't want to take my calls. My discussion with Jessica this afternoon was, can I get as much information as I can, give it to the people who don't understand it, and put Greg on the agenda, and her answer to me was yes, which is what I was calling to discuss with you. And two weeks ago, when I was calling you, I was gonna say the same thing, I don't know laterals, I don't know plumbing code, you do, but you didn't return or take my call.
Now that this is blowing up in your face, you're doing something about it.
It doesn't sound like it's blowing up in my face.
But I've been here the last three meetings, and you won't even answer questions, your attorney's telemeeting, wrap it up and get out of here. This is where we deal with it, not in Vitale's.
That was my intention when I called you.
Okay.
Anybody else?
My name's John Manuel, 126 Parkland Street. I hear what, what Greg's going through for himself and also for the tenants across the street. It seems like the council and the people that have the wherewithal to do things around here really are concerned a whole lot about infrastructure. Infrastructure is probably the furthest play from a lot of people's mind. And when it should have been a six-inch line when Greg said, or an eight-inch line, why isn't it a four-inch line? That tells me that there's some cost savings there and they didn't want to deal properly with the infrastructure. I also see that with some of the roads and stuff that are around here, and yeah, you know, we could pave some roads, but we can't pave other roads, but still, we can get a lot of the frills in town, all the little pretty and nice things, but we don't want to deal with the stuff that we, as citizens of this community, have to deal with every day. We want to have a nice presentation for everyone that comes in here, but it seems like we don't really want to address the needs that the people in the community have and a lot of the concerns there too. So I guess, I was on a planning commission for quite a while, and I saw it way back then already, and I think there's more to this town than just, just pretty stuff around. There's a lot of stuff in the ground, and there's also roads that are above the ground. And I think we ought to start looking at that a little more seriously. And if, if something has to happen across the road or whatever, hey, that's, that's the property of the city. And it should be done, it's the property of the city. Until it hits a lot line, it's the property of the city. After a lot line, it's the property of the tenants, or the homeowner, or the building owners. And that's the way it is wherever you go. So anyway, I'd like to just thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will close public comment, move to old business, and we will officially open the public hearing for the 2022-2023 budget. Like, do you have anything additional on the budget?
No, I think we've spent a lot of time with it, a lot of work that we have in council on, on the budget. The only, the only thing I would add is that we did update in your PHECET, the like power budget, there were some changes to it, but from the city's end, we've not made any changes.
Any council comment on any of the budgets that were reviewed? Any public comment on the budget for 2022-2023? All right, we will now close the public hearing. 1122 is what the, is the budget.
Looking for a motion.
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion.
It's 1122.
Yeah, there it is, I'm caught. Motion for...
So moved.
Yeah.
Removed and we accept resolution 1122.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, he is gone, so new business number A, Memorial Day Parade.
I received a request from the American Legion of Veterans for a war to have a Memorial Day parade this year. They would like to begin staging at 9:00 AM on Monday, May 30, and 9:00 AM at the fairgrounds. The parade would begin at 10:00 AM, the ceremony at Old West Cemetery shortly thereafter. They are requesting for Main Street to be closed from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM from Hudson to Monroe. They will walk north of Monroe to the cemetery. This will be done in the same manner as it was done prior to the pandemic. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approach the closure of Main Street from Hudson to Monroe for the Memorial Day Parade on May 30, 2022.
Anybody from the American Legion or the VFW?
I talked to Herb Rastrey, the coordinator for the parade.
Okay.
So, and he, this is what he explained to me.
All right. Motion to approve the Memorial Day Parade street closure. I'll make that motion. I'll support. Motion on second, any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. I don't need Riverwalk request.
This is our annual request for Riverwalk. I think Liz is there, I don't know for certain, but she said she was gonna be there. The chamber count, I'll read her memo, the Lowell Area Chief of Commerce, once again, proud to have a 2028 annual Riverwalk Festival, Thursday, July 7, Friday, July 8, and Saturday, July 9. This year's two nights and one-day event offer many activities for you and your family to enjoy. Check out their schedule at riverwalkfestival.org for event times, information, and applications. In preparation for the event, they are requesting street closures for the following streets and times. They're requesting the permission to close every street west of Monroe, Thursday, July 8, beginning at 6:00 AM, for Saturday, July 10, 9:00 PM, for the purposes of booth concessions. Requesting permission to close every street east of Monroe to Jefferson Street, Washington Street, north of Monroe to the High, to High Street, Saturday, July 9, beginning at 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the Riverwalk cruise-in. They're requesting permission to close Main Street at 1:45 from Jackson to Hudson for the Riverwalk rumble classic cars departing the cruise-in. That's their request. They are, I don't know if Liz is there, but they are not having a parade this year, they're having a, like a rumble on the way out of the cruise, I don't know if she can explain that.
Liz is here. You better explain that.
Ah, it's burnouts, that's what it's gonna be.
And our robes are both...
Chris is all excited. Yeah, we're not gonna do the normal parade. Actually, we didn't do it last year, and we believe it wasn't missed. It's kind of hard to get bands and whatnot for the parade, so we decided not to do it again this year, but to kind of bring back, several years ago, we did a rumble and we thought we'd try that again, and that will be with our classic cars that exit at about 1:45, and they'll go side by side down Main Street, and when they get to the corner, they'll do a zip line sort of an action, and they will follow the street light as their, or law, I guess, is the way to say it. So the cars at that point could either go west on Main, or they can turn north on Hudson, but absolutely no left turns. So that's kind of new, old brings something back. Other than that, the street closures are exactly the same as we've always asked for. We're just asking to go a little bit further north on Washington in case we get more cars. We had a record number of cars last year.
Yeah, it was packed. That's good.
Yeah.
Is there no parade, anything you think could be going forward?
Yeah, I think so. We're gonna focus on Christmas.
Any other questions for Liz? Motion to approve the Riverwalk request, I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
I'll stay here.
Okay. Showboat Insurance, Mike.
Lowell Showboat Six Committee would like to seek conditional coverage of property insurance for Lowell Showboat. They reached out to Dave Emmett from Glen Morrison Associates to seek their assistance. In order for this to occur, they've asked me to sign a form designating Mr. Emmett to be the agent of record in order to secure quotes. After discussing this with the city attorney, I do not have the authority to sign off on this without the city council approval. I have no issue if Lowell Showboat Six Committee would like to seek other options. This has no impact on the city's insurance policy administered by BHS in the event of this form designating Mr. Emmett to be agent of record assigned. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council allow for me to sign the agent of record from broke form allowing Dave Emmett from Glen Morrison Associates to represent that Lowell Showboat Six and securing property insurance quotes for Showboat. And I don't know if Liz is in the opinion.
No, it's pretty much it. He does such a good job.
He's gonna sign a form so that you guys can try to save money, is that what we're doing? All right. I'll make the motion that we allow Mike to sign the agent of record form.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Special Event Insurance, Mike.
During the warmer months, we're seeing more events in the downtown district. This is a positive thing for businesses in the city. However, these events create insurance liabilities the city needs to address. We require these events to submit special event permits, which are then forwarded to our insurance carrier. One of the requirements is to, one of the, one of the insurance requirements is to have the applicant for the event provide a certificate listing the city as an additional insurer. This takes liability away from the city while the event is held. With many of the events, with many of these events, insurance is not an issue. For example, many events are sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and, and/or Kent County Youth Fair. They have a blanket umbrella policy whereby the city is listed as an additional insurer. However, we're seeing more events not falling under these umbrellas. For example, the markets on Main are not in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce any longer and don't fall under their umbrella. In addition, we've had some events, for example, street closures, where in order to have special insurance, the city as an, as an additional insurer, is rather costly. I reached out to our agent, Chrissy Aaron Morris from BHS, to see what we could do to address this. I was wondering if we even needed these, needed to require these event holders to list us as a conditional insurer. In my discussion with Chris, he suggested we really need to make sure this issue is addressed. The city is on the hook for liability if the event, something negative occurs at these events. He suggested two options for the city to consider. The first option was to determine the events the city would like to cover and pay for an additional insurer rider to the policy. I haven't had it thrown out for a quote on this yet, however, we can identify the events like Market on Main and the events we know we usually close the road more annually. However, for new events which might spring up, they won't be covered until the next renewal. The other option is we could provide a waiver to participants, the big aside, whereby they are agreed to the city not being liable in the event something occurs. So it's kind of, it's kind of, we kind of have two options for what we want to do if we want to, if we want to do this. Obviously, we want people to have events and we've had, you know, we've had, we've even had, for example, I know Eric Marcus discussed a concern about this.
I can...
And it's something that, you know, we like, we like to come to a reasonable solution on, so...
Speaking of Eric Marcus, when he came and talked to us about Ability Weaver, it made me think about my upcoming concert, and I needed to have the liability. I called my insurance agent, and he said, "Not a problem, you got an umbrella anyway." So I called Eric, I said, "You better double check with your insurance guy, because they own a business, they have a residence." He ended up not having to pay anything. And I'm not saying that would apply to everybody. I was kind of hoping Eric would be here tonight when I saw this on the agenda, but I ran into him and he said, "Hey, thanks for looking into that, because he got it taken care of." With Market on Main Street, you're talking about people that are setting up a tent on the sidewalk that probably don't have any business, so that's a whole different ballgame.
But the easiest thing to do is print up a waiver and include it with the permit application on the package. Larry, I'm sorry.
No, I'm Perry Beach, 924 Riverside. We, our neighborhood on Riverside, the last city block, in years past, probably not in the last five, six, again, when our kids were younger, but we used to come to the city and get permission to actually close Riverside, the last block on a Saturday in the fall for a block party. And again, those types of things, I would hope that the city would still, you know, would consider those types of, of events and kind of go from there. Again, if it came up to that in our neighborhood, because I do business with the city and stuff, I have a $2 million liability, that, you know, I could always, you know, make sure that they were assigned, but other neighborhoods that might want to do the same thing might not have that, have that option, so I just want to throw that out.
Thanks, Bear. So Mike, what about doing like the fairgrounds? I've held a couple of big events down there, and I literally just paid them a minimal fee to be a rider on their policy.
I guess we could look at that. Like I said, I'd have to figure out how much it would cost for the rider and maybe if we could determine ahead of time how many events we're gonna be able to sponsor, then we could just divide that out by the number of events and that's what we charge. But we could do something if we wanted to do that. The only issue that's gonna come up is if there's new events, I don't know, the way Chris explained that to me was that if we knew the events ahead of time, we could get them covered, but if we didn't, that's, might be an issue with policy that's gonna have that burdened assignment.
Yeah, I was pretty good if an event gets canceled, I'll oversee that money back and get it. Yeah, for a reason. I really think if we can just have a waiver for people, is that, what's common, do you know what is common?
I think typically, there's a waiver and insurance. You can have a waiver, but if, you know, something happens and they sue the city, you know, they can try to get around the waiver, they argue certain theories about waivers, but if there's, if there's insurance in place that definitely covers an event, then there's money sitting there. So, I mean, the best case scenario would be to have both a waiver and, and insurance. I think typically, it is put on the event holder to provide that, but it sounds like there's some where that's proving difficult, so, you know, I think we could look at different options. I don't know what you're considering tonight, but...
Just a direction.
Just some direction about...
Christmas through Lowell. But...
It's on our insurance, and we have to provide the city conditioning, ensure that all our events.
But don't the people who are hosting it in their homes?
Yes.
Because I remember the lady, a few years ago, and, you know, you talk about this stuff and you think, "Oh, that'll never happen." Well, it happened.
Twenty years ago, what? I know, it's like... But it's, we do, Christmas through Lowell, we just ask our participants to provide us a $500,000 liability. There's a lawyer here, but, you know, I mean, that's probably the same thing we're trying to take.
Yeah, but what about what Mike Perry's talking about? So if he wants to have a block already, because people haven't been able to do anything for two years, now he's gotta go door to door and say, "Hey, my insurance is gonna cost me 500 bucks," so you got 25 bucks for the insurance and $5 for the hot tub.
If you have an umbrella already in place, it doesn't cost anything.
If he does in place already, but...
Well, he, Perry does.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right. I, I would like to discuss the markets on Main since it just happened. It's not a chamber event?
Yeah, we gave it up, just because we had too much going on in the distance, you know, we gave it up. And so before, it was on our insurance policy, and now it's not, and so that, the merchants took on that responsibility now. I don't know as a group if the merchants can have an umbrella policy. I mean, it's not like one person's in charge, right?
Right. How many different, were on, they set up on the sidewalks?
I think they only had 12, I think, this last time. Eleven. I mean, it wasn't a lot, but, you know.
But if we have, like, I have an umbrella, you place them in your area technically, then they're, they're covered under our umbrella, like when we do Christmas through Lowell, even though I know it's covered on Liz, but we have people inside us.
So if, if somebody was set up in front of your shop with a tent...
If I gave permission yet, then I consider that under my umbrella.
But Market on Main, they don't, they ask the individual businesses?
Well, they sign up somewhere, I suppose.
Yeah, you'd have to have Tanya and...
I assumed it was a chamber event, so I'm learning a little bit this morning.
Because I, I see people not necessarily in front of the building, but actually on the bridge.
Yeah.
Well, we do require it from anybody who's pulling a special event permit, right? So whoever the sponsor is, or whoever the person is that's asking for the permit, one of the boxes you have to tick is provide additional insurance. You provided that upfront and people knew that they had to do that, so it's gonna be ones that are last minute, but if there's some ongoing one and they know that that's an expectation, they can start working on providing that to us.
Well, 'cause it's a, I have...
My name's Dave Dean, but I have an event company...
Address, Dave, sorry.
What's that?
Address. Address.
Oh, I'm not a Lowell resident, I live in Virginia.
Sorry.
I'm just sitting here listening to this and I'm in event business, like everywhere, like all over the country. And I'm offered insurance in these venues, in these different towns and cities, if I don't provide my own. And so, like, these places are prepared. I can buy into the policy that they have or I use my own. It's just probably a business opportunity or something that can go towards your policy.
Thank you.
I think that's what Mike was saying, correct? That's my option. Because we have enough time to be able to do that. But there was a cutoff, right, that prevents you if...
We have to add them to the policy now, we knew all I think was what...
Yeah.
Like, does that deter...
I know that normally annually we have the, you know, the Mark Down Main most Monday, most second Saturdays of the month, not everyone. That one would be very easy to... If we put it on the additional sure, that'd be very easy to do. We know there's certain events, for example, we know that usually Ability Weaver comes to us in the spring requesting a road closure. Usually Lord's Star Antiques does as well. You know, and those are the only ones that I know of that this might pertain to. Now, there might be other events I'm missing, but I think like the hardest festival even... I think that's a cheaper event, I could be wrong, but I believe that one's always covered.
My concern is that I don't want to deter last-minute events from coming here because we didn't ask them at the beginning of the year or because they want to do a block party but they don't have beach and floor insurance. I don't want insurance to be a deterrent because it's already enough of a racket and a deterrent for everybody now. It's true.
I'm trying to avoid that, so that's what we're trying to...
Just a quick... No, I have to fill out a special events permit.
Nope.
Okay. So, I mean, Market on Main, it would be the same. They should fill out a special events for that. Ability Weaver should too and...
Ability Weaver did.
Yep, but I mean, on it, it talks directly about the insurance.
You have to have the approval of insurance.
You just have to do it. I know, you know, sometimes it is more expensive, but then it's the cost of doing that event or that business. Where the block parties seem a little different than putting a tent on Main Street. I mean, there's a big liability there.
I know, but what about what like Dave's talking about where you can just buy in the last minute? That's, I don't think, something we have right now, is it? Is pulling... What's... I keep forgetting your hair. Go ahead.
Did we have our insurance guy?
Yeah, can we bring him here?
To a meeting?
I can bring him, yeah, I can bring him if you'd like. If we want to table this, I can bring him to that meeting.
Then we can ask him about specific examples, block parties, Main Street market.
Policy for 20 events to be determined later. And then that's it. And when you get your 20...
Fun and early, yeah, but wouldn't locate, like, there's more liability being on Main Street because there's traffic than there is being in the grass at the old home, you know what I mean? You don't want to be underinsured for an event or overinsured.
I'm a service, actually, for all those small business owners. You know, you guys are licensing events in your town, so you kind of, you put yourself out there. But now you can provide the service back. It makes it easy, you know? It's not that, it won't be expensive either, I don't think, due to...
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to table this item and go, we can get a representative from the insurance company and like in person.
Will do.
I'll support.
Motion on the second. Any other discussion on insurance? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzleal?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Right, thanks, Dave.
He has the responsibility to stand by it. Warm it up. That may be one of your speakers.
It just sounded fast.
Oh.
I looked out the window.
All right, so we have a request for Hatwood for Industrial District. Resolution 1222 would set a public hearing for Monday, June 6th during our next regularly scheduled council meeting. We can be able to post that in the ledger if we make a motion on resolution 1222.
I make a motion that we have a public hearing that day?
That's for... Jim, go.
Jim, go.
Motion on the second. Any other discussion?
We get paid by how many motions we make in a second, so that's why we fight over it.
About 14 behind Cliff.
I like thunder, it's behind them.
Mike, anything to add for 10122?
He's adding, but...
I think he said no, he was...
That's what I was hoping he would say.
No, it switched off the line.
There you go.
Yeah. Last chance.
Going ones? Um, hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the only thing to add is this is to create the development district in the event there was ever to come for a future industrial facility tax credit for new investment, not for anything currently in place.
Right. All right, motion on the second. Sue.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzleal?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
All right, same thing for resolution 1322. Public hearing for our next council meeting. This is to discuss King Milling's industrial facility tax credit for the new mill that they are looking to build. Same with the public notices, same time and date for the hearing as this one. So, I'll...
Same motions from Cliff.
I'll let you catch on.
I'll support. Thanks, that was very considerate.
One second, Mike, anything to add on King Milling?
What'd he say, Perry, you say no?
I don't think he heard you.
All right, perfect, sue.
Councilmember Salzleal?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Last item, number G, City Hall AC unit.
I don't know why we're talking about this.
Because it's freezing. Frozen. Icicle, right here.
In our fiscal year 2223 budget, the city budget $150,000 to install a new air conditioning unit for the City Hall. As you know, our current unit has reached its usual end of life. Sorry. As you know, our current unit has reached its usual end of life. I received a phone call Friday from Paul Flanagan at Progressive Heating. He informed me that after January 1st of 2023, a new electric code will be placed on air conditioning units. If we would like to have this completed before then, we need to have a unit ordered by the end of May. He informed me that failure to order by the end of May will add anywhere between 15 to 30% to the unit cost for the air conditioner. So, to avoid this increased cost, we would need to order it by the end of May. As you know, we approved the budget for this this evening. I only, I did attach the quote that he gave me on Friday. As I previously stated, if we went to bid for this, we would need to hire an engineer to draft plans for this. This would be an increased cost of budget. Progressive Heating is a preferred vendor for the city alone. They've performed work at our building for many years and have technical and institutional knowledge of our HVAC system. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approved me to order a new air conditioning unit for City Hall that costs not to exceed $160,000. The only thing I'll add is if you come into my office, which I know a lot of you have, in the summertime, it's a blast furnace. So, our side of the building is the most affected, Suzie and me, and then where you're at are the most affected right now with the current situation with our air conditioning. But it's, we need updated.
All right, any questions for Mike?
Greg Canfield, 403 North Washington. I thought any items over $10,000 by city charter had to be out for bid. Is this a violation of the charter?
That is incorrect. Our purchase policy allows us to not have to do that with preferred vendors, which is called Hall of Honor.
Where do I find that?
The purchase policy.
Because I didn't see that. It just, it doesn't make any sense to me. A $160,000 item...
So, we did discuss that.
I just, items over a certain dollar, just because your preferred vendor doesn't give you exclusivity to vet it. If it is, it needs to be changed.
All right, any other discussion? Motion for the AC unit from Progressive.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzleal?
Yes.
All right, Boarding Commission reports, Cliff.
I've been asked, I work with Mark Anderson on the trails and he's very involved in the new fairgrounds, so he asked me if I would share some updates with the council at large about what's going on out there. I don't know if you're aware of it, but their campaign goal was to hit $14 million. It's going to be called the Grand Agricultural Center of West Michigan and it's going to be the home of the Kent County Youth Fair. And they are, Mark is a co-fundraiser with Dave Hildenbrand, our former senator, and they're about $1.4 million short of hitting $14 million. There's been $357,500 in corporate donor, $407,500 in private donors. The state approved $5.2 million in appropriations and that was by the legislature and the governor of Stanton as well. Senator Debbie Stabenow has been helpful getting some federal funds. So far, $2.1 million have been approved and they're asking for slightly more. So, they got big plans out there. Wolverine Construction is the general out there and things are happening. My other two, you haven't met.
Jim?
Our report, we met, we found out for one, so obviously revoked. One of the big changes is instead of having a noon meeting on that Monday, they want to do it at 7:00 a.m. So...
In the morning?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm so excited, I can actually go.
Yes, we're having trouble getting just because work schedules and everything else, so we're going to do it at 7:00 a.m. What we have, the secretary is going to be taking notes, so Suzie does not have to be there at that early, at her early start. So, we're going to try and see what happens and start since September.
That'd be Mondays, right?
Huh?
Mondays?
Monday mornings.
So, if somebody, I can attend those.
You can attend, the door will be open to low light and power and yes, the public will be available at 7:00 a.m.
What?
Okay. Okay. Get my report.
All right, I appreciate it.
We'll be working with low light and power to cut down some trees along both roads. Some of them are trying to get rid of those high power lines and so we're looking at taking them down and replacing them with trees that don't get quite that tall, so we can always keep up on that. So, something discussed during that. I add the low light and power board. A lot of things are happening over there, but one thing, there were three people that had anniversaries. Ryan, each man had six years. Emily, one. And then Tom has two start and stop days. So, all we can tell you, it was 1980, when he started. So, figure out the math on that and you congratulate him on which anniversary you wanted to celebrate. And that's it for me.
I did not go to planning commission. I do know that there'll be a new coffee shop coming in town, a drive-through. I went to my grand son's baseball games. That's why.
Parks and Rec just some updates. We're still working on the recreation plan. That's sort of exciting, working, going on, approving the survey that we'll be putting out. As an early new resident, I'm sort of excited to see what the citizens see and think about the parks as they are and what will come of the parks in the future. We did have a visit from Mike Weiner from Whole Area Little League. He's talking about expanding, creating a new facility, but also he noted some complaints. I would be one of those former complainers. When we have Little League starting out before the water is on, it is extremely difficult to rush six-year-old little boys in the middle of softball or baseball games over to bathrooms or there's no water available. Obviously, it starts early and can still freeze at night. It's just something that I think we should look at or at least be cognizant of. Lots of families have that complaint. That's it for me.
All right. Shannon is in Spain visiting his son. So, fire authority was canceled for May and vision with Liz and Jerry and Tim is tomorrow at 4:00. Mike, the city managers report.
So, um, the first one is, as I informed you previously, we did, you know, we were looking into an issue over at Front Washington Street. For many years, street sweepings were placed there and since that time, there's been trees and grass that have grown on top of them. We've asked PLDI for a quote to look at testing that. So, I hope, I just got the quote today, so hopefully I will have them here at the next meeting to address that issue. We will be bringing the seven-year road plan back for approval at the next council meeting. We did meet, Laurie Gerard and I met with prior recall, or with BHS regarding prior recall last week. We're looking at an 8.8% increase in health care insurance. The city did receive notice last week that Officer Scott Van Solcom, who will be resigning effective May 24. We will be going, entering from a part-time ranks to see if they're interested in the whole time to issue that through. And then also last, but not least, Scott Popovich, who's retired on Friday. He's been with the city, I believe, 31 years and wish him the best. He did request to leave in 11:35, which I'm going to grant, so that's all I know.
Mike, any discussion on that? All right, no appointments, council comments, do you?
I had the opportunity today to walk through King Milling and have a tour, so I just want to say I can use this league, Patrick Doyle. I initially met him through Chamber of Commerce, but today I got the opportunity to walk through Milling. I don't know what everybody thinks, what a mill looks like, but it is not what I thought it looks like. I learned a lot today and I walked out and I said to him, I said, "I have new appreciation for flour." And I think he thought I was crazy, but it is true. So, I really did appreciate them reaching out and giving a tour.
Marty. I'd like to thank Charlie for putting an article in, and Bull's First Look for doing the article for the climate appreciation. It is kind of neat that you took time out of your day to thank those people and...